Good evening. I'd like to open this regular Select Board meeting, October 22nd, 2018, 7:00 PM, in the Callahan Building. And those who are able, if you would stand, could I pledge allegiance to that?
Yes.
Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Rick, can we have the roll call, please?
Yep.
Here.
Mark Strick.
Here.
Bob Bishop.
Here.
John Bertals.
Here.
Ed Holland.
Present.
John Boyle.
Here.
Ken McTell.
Here. Okay, we have a couple sets of minutes to approve. And one is, are these regular sessions? Yeah. September 24th and October 9th. So...
I make the motion, we accept. September 24th, 2018, minutes as presented.
I'll second that. Motion's just been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or corrections?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
Under the Lions Club Circus, is Paul Talbone and Dan McGinnis, not Kevin?
Magna?
Magna.
Dan McGinnis.
Dan McGinnis.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Approved as amended. I'll second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next.
Okay. I make that motion, we accept the minutes from October 9th, 2018, as presented.
I'll second that. Motion's just been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or corrections? I have, I have one minor, one on page six, under the Public School Billings Committee. The second statement mine under that, where it says mid-March and early June, it should be mid-March, between mid-March and early June. And where it says the timeline is set by MSPA, that should be a B instead of a P. That's probably the way I pronounce it. And that's all I have. Anything else?
Yeah. Want to just say?
Yes, sir.
Under three, you spelled your name again.
Where's that?
Under item, bullet point three, in the page six of six...
That's right.
Six, seven?
Six of seven.
Right here.
Oh, yes. T E L S. Thank you. Didn't even notice it myself. Yeah. Anything else?
Motion's made as corrected.
I'll second that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Public address to the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda, or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company or institution you represent. The public address to the board will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designee. Please be cordially respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. You don't wish to say anything?
Right.
Not now?
I just have enough.
So there's nobody in the audience, there won't be, yeah, there won't be any public address. Thank you. All right. So, first item is an appointment to the Conservation Commission. And this is, we have two memos, actually. The main one is from our town manager, Mr. Walto. It's a ratification of appointment to the Conservation Commission. And it says, "I recommend for your ratification the appointment of Dr. Henry J. Rose, up 89 North Mountain Road, to the Conservation Commission for an initial term to expire on June 30th, 2021. In addition to holding a bachelor's degree in biology with a strong interest in field biology, Dr. Rose is active in many environmental organizations. Among them are Mass Audubon, the Sierra Club, the Trustees of Reservations, Berkshire Natural Resources Council, and the application of ratification of this appointment. We'll bring the commission's roster to a full seven members. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment." And there's also a recommendation from the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Mr. Sacco, which basically reiterates what I just read in Mr. Walto's memo. So, is there any discussion?
Edward and I are going to recuse ourselves as members of the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Is that all?
Oh, yes. I am a member. I just wanted to... No, 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 I am. Yes, I know you are.
I'll make a motion, we approve Henry Rose to the Conservation Commission. Have a second? I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, one opposed. Motion passes. I'll open it up to comment, because Bobby said he wanted to make a comment about this.
Yeah. Henry's very, has been very active right along with the commission. He's been on site inspections with us prior to this. He has a very strong interest in our scientific opinion.
I would second what Bob has just said. Absolutely, very much, and really cares about the town.
I'm sure he will. And I thank him for putting his name in. This gets the commission up to full...
Yes.
Full memberships, which is good. So... Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Okay. Our next item is a report on the junk cars, which was requested initially by Board Member John Boyle. And after that request, the police department went out, as you can see, and I'm not going to read the memos, but they went out and did a sweep of the town. Officer Demoro did the north end, and Officer LeVack did the south end, and Chief Co personally did all the commercial businesses in town. It appears to be in all, about 75 locations that were in violation. And warning citations were issued. And it was, there were also letters of explanation that went to those in violation, telling them how to appeal, or request a, an extension from the initial 30 days to take care of the situation on their property. Specifically, and I'll, because these were two locations that were specifically requested to be taken care of, and that was Tom's Auto Sales on Cusatonix Street. And Chief Co, and let me just back up. With the commercial businesses, even if there wasn't a violation, he sent a notice to the owner of the business, just making them aware of the bylaw. So on this particular location, there are 17 vehicles that were unregistered. The location is allowed six for sale. And so with regard to that, 11 other vehicles were on the lot. And they will be doing a second sweep of all the citations to see all the violations that remain. Those that remain will be issued another citation with a fine. And then with regard to the property at 1190 North Street, Dalton Tractor, there were a number of vehicles, and as well as farming construction equipment, that were on the property. And it was found that the property is our four residential zone. It's not agricultural. And Chief Co spoke with the property owner, and then they requested that I call them, which I did. And I informed them of their, a way to ask for extensions, or to, yeah, to take care of the situation, and how to go about doing it. So hopefully that will be taken care of within the 30 days, or we will get an extension letter from 1190 North Street. Before I go on to the, to the other one, which did, the other issue, which the person did request an extension, is there any comments or questions about any of this so far?
I'd like to thank the Dalton Police Department for going out and doing this. I mean, that sounds like a lot of work.
Yes, it is.
They're very thorough.
Yeah. Especially going around to the commercial business, our commercial properties to find out what they were allowed and what they weren't allowed for vehicles. It's time consuming. And I want to thank Officer Colinas, officers for doing this as well. Or Chief Colinas officers for doing this as well. So, any other comments? All right. Now, we do have one request for an extension. And the letter in front of us is from a Mr. Gary Steiner, Ten Home Terrace, with regard to a gray Jeep Cherokee. And it says, "To whom this may concern, I, Gary Steiner, would like to respectfully request an extension to remove the SUV Jeep Grand Cherokee at Ten Home Terrace currently for some repair and/or for sale. I will handle this matter accordingly." And he is requesting, he has a scheduled removal date of 11/9/18. So, I'll leave it up to discussion with board members. He's allowed up to 30 days?
Just one thing, we always get into this. When, I'm assuming that the board's going to grant the extension, which I fully support.
Oh, when it starts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It starts...
Starts, starts, the extension will start 30 days. You get, automatically you get 30 days from the date of the citation, date of notice. So, I think we'll get, if you choose to approve an additional 30 days, it'll be up to 12/9. Because you get 30 days...
30 days from the date of the...
Yeah.
So...
Date of the notice, which was October 9th. So he has until November 9th to remove the vehicle, and then if he wants to petition for more time. Although he's...
Well, he's, his scheduled removal date is 11/9. We can grant anywhere up to 30 days. So we could grant him another two weeks if he wanted to, but...
Why don't we just grant him until 11/9?
He has it automatically anyways.
I'm not clear whether he's saying that's when it's supposed to be removed, but he's not going to make it, or whether he's asking to have that be the date that he will have it done. I'm taking it really that that's the date that he thinks he's supposed to remove it, and he wants 30 days from there. He wants an extension from there.
Just in case.
Yes.
You mean from the 9th?
From the 9th, that's what I think, yeah.
He says schedule removal.
Because he probably didn't get it till October 9th.
Quite, quite honestly, I would just, I would just give him to December 9th.
Yes, I think that would avoid any confusion, any possible...
December 9th?
Yes.
But, you know, that's my opinion, honestly.
I agree. I would mean...
Okay. I need a motion, though.
I'll make a motion, we grant an extension to 12/9/18 to Gary Steiner of Ten Home...
Oh, Ten Home Terrace.
Ten Home Terrace.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you. Okay. The next, the next item is Berkshire Gas Resident Notification Letter of April 27th to 2018. And I'm not going to go through the entire explanation of what we did last meeting, but at last, last meeting, we, I presented this letter that's in front of us to a resident who had contacted me, who was, who found out that we weren't going to be paving Closon Street. And we looked into the matter, or we, we didn't look into the matter at that time. It was more of a request on what, how to proceed with the, with the issue. And at the end of that meeting, two things came out of it, or at the end of the discussion, two things came out of it. And the first thing was, Mr. Boyle suggested that we speak with our Highway Superintendent, John Roughly, who is with us tonight, to see if there was any type of conversation with Berkshire Gas with regard to this. And we were also going to invite Berkshire Gas to our meeting tonight. Mr. Roughly is here. Berkshire Gas is not here, but they did send a letter. I'll, I'm going to paraphrase it, not now, but in a moment. I just want to give people a timeline here. So, on the 12th, I tried to get ahold of John, but he was tied up with, with some matters at the Highway Department. I didn't get to talk, talk with Mr. Roughly until the 15th of October. And at that point in time, he told me about this annual letter that, or request that he gets from Berkshire Gas, every year, with regard to street projects. He had gotten this letter and filled it, filled out the request in late March of this year. John, would you mind explaining this, this letter, what it is, or, instead of me doing it?
Okay. Yeah. So the letter, we get the letter annually. It's a request for construction activities that the town's going to be doing or planning. So I usually don't fill it out. This was the first time I fill it out since I worked here, because, you know, we're never positive on what projects. You know, we have a capital plan, but it doesn't always, you know, go to...
Well, seeing that you mentioned that, I'll just say that we also have a copy of our capital improvement plan, project plan...
Yeah.
Which Mr. Walto put together back in June of 2017. And in it states the streets, the Highway Department is going to have, and those, those streets, and this is a five-year plan, those streets were, you know, Old Windsor, Beverly, Enzen Hill, Franklin, Clit, and Miriam. Those are the only streets listed. So, that's, that's the official list, so to speak, that the town was working on. But, go ahead, John. I just wanted to get that in.
So, with that said, there's a cover letter that they send along with the request for construction activities form, which you have, that's the, that's the streets are listed. So, in that letter, it states, "We understand that budgeting, funding, and circumstances play a role in determining which projects receive approval." So, that right there pretty much tells you, it's, they're not, they're not, this isn't a set in stone set of streets or projects, and I just don't believe that they should use it as their marketing tool. You know, our, our list, street list, as their marketing tool. I guess, unless they came to the board and maybe got our...
During the year, do you get requests, not just, do you get requests from companies when they have projects that will affect the road?
Yeah.
Does Berkshire Gas do that on a, on a regular basis, even though you get this letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a permitting process.
Okay. So, do you have anything else you want to add at this point?
I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. So, so after, after this conversation, we tried to get ahold of Berkshire Gas to send us that list, and we never were able to get that. And on the 16th, we did get a copy of the list from the Berkshire Eagle, who was able to get it, Larry Parnas faxed it to Mr. Walto. So we did have that list. And then after that came the article in the paper of the Berkshire Eagle, explaining the, the situation to the best of their knowledge. Also on the 18th, John found copies of the cover letter and faxed them to us, so that we knew what was in the cover letter. However, they weren't, it wasn't the cover letter of 2018. As we got up to tonight, the newest one that you could find was 2013. However, from 2000, from year 2000 and 2001, and 2013, the letter essentially never changes, or hadn't changed. And you said it's still the same at this point in time?
Yeah.
It is. Okay. The wording is still the same. So, again, they asked for a priority list, or wish list, of streets that Highway may be doing construction work, or reconstructing the roadway. Give me a moment here, folks. I think as for, as for paperwork, that's, that's about it. But as I said, Berkshire Gas sent us a letter explaining the situation, which everyone has a copy of, and there's one in our mailbox. It came from Christopher Farrell, who is the Manager of Corporate Communications and Government Relations. And I'm not going to read the whole letter. It's paraphrasing, and there are a couple, you know, sections that I would like to say we were, that they were first made aware of, that the town had, had related to Berkshire Gas marketing efforts to residents of the town, that we had concerns. When they received the call last Tuesday from the newspaper, they found out about it when they received the call from the newspaper. Prior to this call, we were unaware of the town's, how the town's concerns, as we had not received any communication from the town concerning this matter. Now, as I remember, on Monday, we tried to, we tried, you tried to contact them. Correct. Okay. Without success. So, it's an, they explain how it's an annual effort, and that they use the list to make sure that their projects don't affect the streets. But again, you know, I don't know how it worked out with Dalton Division Road, how you were notified with Dalton Division Road, or were you?
Yeah.
You were? Okay. When were you notified about Dalton Division Road gas work?
Probably a couple months before they started. That was, that's a big project.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
But they usually give us ample time, as far as the permitting process.
Okay.
Of course, relationship with the construction department.
But in the next to the last paragraph of his letter, and he said they didn't have time to have a representative be here tonight, and that's why we received the letter. But Mr. Farrell said, "In a recent conversation about this practice with Town Manager Walto, he has asked that Berkshire Gas, Gas's annual request for a planned road maintenance list be directed to him going forward, instead of your Highway Superintendent, and we are happy to accommodate this request." So in the future, and I'm glad that they're going to do this, it's one source. If nothing else, we have one source now that's going to give the information. And I don't see where it's going to change until you change the capital plan, capital improvement plan. So...
Which, which is also approved by this board, so it's just, yeah, it'd be seamless.
Right. Right. Exactly. You come up with a project, we approve the projects, and Highway, they do the projects, or they execute the project. So... I'm, I'm glad they're, they're going to be doing that, as I said, contacting you. But what I would really like, and I don't know how we can communicate this to them, and I'm sure you're going to be receiving another letter next year, John, in regard to the same, wanting the same information. But it would be nice if Berkshire Gas could add a statement in the letter for residents to confirm with the town about any construction prior to gas hookup. Something to that effect. That's what I have. And I'll leave it open to discussion or comment from the board on this.
Yeah, well, just, John Roughly is 100% right. This information shouldn't have been used as a marketing tool. Very good phrasing, John. And it, which is exactly what they did. But on the other hand, they haven't done it on any other streets.
I don't know if they did.
Well, I mean, I think we would have heard about it.
They did it on Demming Street.
Did they?
Yeah.
The whole, all three of them?
I don't know. My mother-in-law, who lives on Demming Street, got a letter, and she, she wasn't interested, so she just threw the...
Oh, okay. So they did do it on...
Okay. So they must have.
Yeah. This letter, in fact, says, says that. It says, "The list is provided to our marketing department, so that it can appraise non-customers on the listed streets of the impending work." So, they must have contacted everybody. At least, we're assuming that, based on the letter.
Yeah, but the request still, I mean, the request from Highway, there's never a mention of marketing on it, when he, when he filled out that list, as I remember.
I think, also, you might suggest to John, if John, if you get a letter next year, on your same form letter, you can return it, or turn it over to the Town Manager.
Yeah, that's...
Or return it, or give him a call, yeah, turn it over to the Town Manager, who consults with the board regarding the definitiveness of any reconstruction plan.
It's, it's unfortunate that the, the information, the wrong information got out, and then, then got out to the residents. This way, I think we'll avoid this problem next time around. I did contact the resident in question with regard to this, and he, he is, he has not contacted Berkshire Gas on this matter, and he doesn't intend to. He's just, he's just going to let it, let it ride, and that's, that's the end of it. He wanted to thank us for our efforts in bringing this to people's attentions, or attention. And again, he was, he was, he was happy with what we did. The one thing that was kind of bothersome to him, in addition to what had taken place, is when they did do the service at his house, is that they didn't have to touch the street. They just had to dig up the grassy patch between the sidewalk and the road, and that was a, so the, the street wasn't even touched.
And which side did Gas main, Zach?
And that's, yeah, the gas main is on his side of the road, so, anyway. And I, and I apologize for any inconvenience to the resident, and he, he said there wasn't really any need to do that. He said, but he thanked, he thanked me for that. So with him, everything is taken care of. Any other comments?
Side cabinet.
Yeah.
Up during the infamous Hooton Town Street reconstruction over the last two years, the gas stops at the intersection of East Street and East Hooton Street. And there's six houses and a condo, condo complex beyond that. And all of them personally approached me and said, "We wanted gas."
Mm-hmm.
I said, "Well, now's the opportunity to contact the gas company." Because the street's obviously going to be torn up, or is being torn up, but nothing ever became of it. I don't know what happened.
Oh.
Now, those are the people that wanted it.
I don't know.
And here's the gas company. I'm, I was listening to people that really don't want it.
A lot.
I don't know. Anything about that, you ever hear about that, John?
I don't know. I don't know why they didn't go all the way down. Probably the bridge, the cost.
No. Well, that's right. Only as far as the bridge. But, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 houses before the bridge?
Yeah.
One house and a condo after the bridge.
There's no gas service in those houses, at, in front of those houses, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
Couldn't they come down the other way, John, on Route 8, come back that way?
It's across the bridge. I guess that's a big impediment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, bridge on both sides, there's a bridge, in Hooton.
But those, I think the five houses before the bridge, they all wanted it, and they all talked, so contacted the gas company.
Well, John, thanks for your help, and thanks for being here tonight to answer any Now that we know what we're going to do in the future, it shouldn't be an issue. So, thank you. Okay. Anything else before we go on to the next item? Okay. The next item, might as well stay for this, John.
Yeah.
Okay. Is opening up the road... Is opening up the road at the old Barton property or the road that goes up to our APR land that we acquired and to that North Mountain proposed park area. I was contacted by a couple individuals wanting to know or wanting to be able to go up and walk the property or use the road or get up, have access to North Mountain that way. And I told them we couldn't do it at this point in time for a variety of reasons and until we know exactly what we need to do with the property. In the meantime, when I brought this up to Ken, Mr. Barton contacted him because he still owns 30 acres above it, on the other side of it?
He owns a parcel, yeah, just to the north of it.
To the north of it, and this is the only way to access that property. So, this is kind of where we're at, and Ken, you were going to try and contact Town Council on it?
I had a discussion with Town Council last Thursday and also had Dawn check on whether the land was properly insured. So, the land is insured. It's part of what we have insured. It's North Mountain, access to North Mountain, the so-called North Mountain Park parcel, since it was transferred from the tax title custodian, remember, to the custody of the select board, town meeting, is under your jurisdiction and allowing access to it is at your discretion completely. Access to the other part of the farm that's still within the jurisdiction of the tax title custodian also requires her consent because she is the tax title custodian. So, if you wanted to allow people up there, then it would be... and I've already briefed Dawn about this as well, when I asked her to check on the insurance. So, the third part of this is, Mr. Barton says that that road going up in there is some kind of right-of-way to which he has a right. So, I told him I would probably talk to him. I said, "I don't want to block you from getting there if you have some kind of right and you have a need to get there, but I will check with Town Council and discuss it with the select board." So, Town Council said, "If he believes he has a right, he needs to demonstrate that by giving us information about what his rights are, and it shouldn't be up to the town to do that. He needs to do that." So, that's it. In summary, can allow access to the property, can allow access to all of the property with your son of the tax title custodian, who I reasonably believe will agree with you if that's what you want to do. Property is insured. I think our insurance agent got a little bit of indigestion. We said people might be hunting up there. Didn't say you couldn't do it. Well, kind of... so... and if Mr. Barton wants to continuously use that right-of-way, that roadway, then he needs to demonstrate to us that he has a legal right to use it.
At one point in time, I thought that road was an access for the radio tower that was up there. And that was, I believe, at one time owned or operated by Time Warner. But since it's not being used, I don't know if they're using anything up there. It used to be a microwave tile, I believe. My only worry is, we had... one of the reasons that we posted it, and I don't... one of the reasons why we posted it was because of the contaminated property.
True.
As well as the access to hang that property without permission. And now, I think that that's... that the access for hanging is kind of... we're beyond that because we're going to be setting up an APR whatever it was.
De-ization of the...
Yeah. So, I think the only stumbling block is the property that may be contaminated.
I would agree with you. There's a certain risk. I mean, we don't know what's really, whether it's contaminated or not.
That's right.
But it isn't what it's contaminated with. And so, to allow anyone just even to tramp on it right now, walk on it, that just may not be a good idea for liability reasons.
Yes. I concur with Ed. It's a good assessment. What in doubt, don't do it.
But how do you separate that parcel from the others? What kind of a, you know, barrier?
With Mr. Barton, he has to show us that he has the right or he needs to use that property or has used that road for access to his property. If people wanted to go on the APR land in the forest or the field or whatever that is the APR land, they can access it other ways. They can access it from Windsor. They can access it from Chalet Road, really. Chalet Road technically runs right through the middle of it.
It uses it from the Duncan Brook property.
Right. Yeah, that's... yeah. So, I don't know. Unless we just post... no, we can't do that. I was going to say, if we just post the North Mountain Park land for the time being, I mean, we're not going to get... we're not going to get any type of answer on this for a while, next year sometime, hopefully, on whether it is contaminated. So, what do you think? How do we go about it? We either post it the way it is or we post it differently. And to post it differently is still going to post that road because of that contaminated properties on both sides of the road and the road. We probably should post it all.
Ken, too, we only... this board only has, according to Ken, jurisdiction over that one parcel.
Yeah.
And Dawn, Peggy has jurisdiction, and you posted Town Treasurer over the others.
Mm-hmm.
So, that complicates the whole thing. It would put her in a bad position, too, if we started passing a bucket, saying, "Well, go see Dawn." I think we should make a command decision and post the whole track based on the...
Keep it posted as it is.
Yes.
Any other comments?
I agree with that as much as I would like to have people up there being able to explore and do what they want to do up there, but I think for the time being, it's just a prudent thing to do.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to keep the land posted as it is right now.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made. Is there any further discussion before we... do you have any comments, John? Because you were using it this past winter.
Yeah, I mean, when we put that gate up, we put it up, and people weren't happy.
Yes.
So, I think that's the main thing, is that gate was the access to park up there for hunting. But as you said, if you were to grant it, which you didn't, they couldn't access it from Duncan's Road.
Okay. So, you don't have... as a highway issue, it's not a...
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Thanks, John. Okay, we have a couple of grants to accept. See you later. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And we have one, a grant that's being accepted by the Dalton Cultural Council from the Massachusetts Cultural Council in the amount of $5,100 for the purpose of continuing to promote the arts, humanities, and interpretive sciences for the town of Dalton. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We accept a grant of $5,100 to the Dalton Cultural Council.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept this grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council. Is there any... is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second one is to benefit the Dalton Police Department, and this is a... it's kind of an ongoing grant, and I think it's wonderful because they have to replace bulletproof vests. Five years? Mark, still?
Five years.
It's five years. And this is an amount of $1,987.50 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership under the Bulletproof Vest Partnership program. So, may I have a motion?
I make a motion. We accept a grant of $1,987.50 to the Dalton Police.
I'll second that.
From the bulletproof...
Yeah, from the bulletproof vest partnership.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mark, I would just ask you, out of curiosity, does it wear out? I mean, is it a fabric not being bulletproof?
Exactly. That's what happens. It starts to deteriorate between the sweat and the heat and then the cold.
Well, we don't want that.
They've gotten a lot better over the years because they've gotten a lot lighter and everything, but they're still...
Yeah, that five-year standard's been in place forever, it seems like, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have rural common... can't talk tonight. Rural Commonwealth support letters, and there was an email that was sent out to the towns requesting that we send these letters to Senior Deputy Commissioner of Local Services and the Secretary Beaton, Matthew Beaton, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And it's in regard to state-owned land, and when the state does purchase the land or make these purchases, it has a great impact on rural communities with regard to their tax base. Can you explain that any so that we understand what this tax base thing is, Ken, or do you know yourself?
Well, not that well, except that state-owned land, we've got plenty of that here, has never returned what it might have returned had it been held in private hands. So, it's always been an issue of contention between rural municipalities, which have state-owned land, and the Commonwealth. And it doesn't get much play in Boston because it's out here. It's in the area of Commonwealth with a little political clout.
Okay.
So, this nonprofit agency, rural, called Rural Commonwealth, you remember, they had a meeting here last year, has been talking about these issues. And so, they've provided us with two suggested letters. The first letter really says, you know, "We don't know about how we're being compensated. Most communities don't really understand it. You ought to explain it better to all of us." The second letter says, you know, "There's a provision in the Code of Massachusetts Regulations which requires public hearings, in the case of the state acquiring land, that the process of consensual eminent domain..." That's exactly what happened with the town forest, was consensual eminent domain. Now, we knew they were buying that land because they're buying it from the town, but in other purchases, they're buying it from private parties, and the town gets no notice of that. So, what they're asking for is that the CMR be changed, Code of Massachusetts Regulations be changed or be viewed as encompassing purchases of land so that communities know what's going on.
Do they pay an actual price per acre? Or is this payment in lieu of taxes, or is it...
It's a pilot payment, and what I see on the budget is just a number. And I know they determine it in some fashion, but that's usually what we get is, "Here's how much it is," and just put it in our revenue plan.
Yeah, but it's nowhere near...
No, and I've never, you know, I've never myself tried to find out what the difference is. I just know that it's not equal to what we would be getting.
Okay. It sounds like a good idea. Comments, suggestions?
Does our state rep support this?
That I don't know. That I don't...
I certainly haven't discussed it with them.
This has to... they wanted these letters in by a certain date, and I don't remember. Was it November?
Yeah.
I don't think it says. I thought it was.
It didn't sound like it'd do any harm.
I don't see where it would do any harm. It would help us rather than hurt us, and it would also give support to, I'm sure, the other towns that are in this bind or find themselves in this bind would like the support. I support it, sending out these letters. But I want to say that there was a November date that they wanted these things handled or caused.
I support it also.
Well, why don't we have a motion on it, though?
Third letter or both?
Well, if both could be drafted, I would say both. And then, we have it ready for signature whenever it is prepared.
Well, the second one here, you just fill in your name, do you, the town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The first one, you just basically make a copy of it.
Okay, I make a motion. We draft two letters of support to...
I was thinking that.
Rural, oh, sorry. The state-owned rural financial, I guess.
It would be Rural Commonwealth.
Yeah, Rural Commonwealth.
In support of, yeah, what you just said.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. So, we're pulling a school building committee report. I have quite a bit to tell you. And these were questions that were brought up at our last meeting as for timelines, votes, whatever. So, I'm just going to go down the list. If you want to stop me when I'm talking about this, please do and ask a question or make a comment. It's fine. October 10th, building committee representatives met with the MSBA to address questions about the initial design of the new school. And by the 31st of October, the MSBA will give that approval on the initial design. On January 24th, 2019, the school committee will vote on the schematic design or cost estimate of the project. On February 6th, 2019, the MSBA will approve or not approve the design, the schematic design, and the estimate as well. So, from that point on is when we will know what the school, what form the school will take and how much the project cost is. It is planned to have a district vote on March 30th or April 6th. March 30th or April 6th. They're both Saturdays, I believe. And this will be a popular vote like it was last time for the last vote on this project. By 4:10 2019, the MSBA will give its approval, final approval. Now, if the district votes down the project on April, on March 30th or April 6th, there's 120-day window in which a second vote may be taken for the project. So, it could be voted up. If it's voted down, it could be voted up on a second vote if, in fact, it isn't voted up on the first.
Who determines whether there's a second vote or not?
The district, probably. Because the district is paying for the voting. It's not It's not a, it's not a town thing.
Will they give some new information, or some reason why they think they'll have a revote?
I would think so, that they would, at that time, if it's.
That's only if it's voted down?
Yes.
Okay.
Ken, just a follow-up question. When you say the district, you mean the School Committee would make a decision?
School Committee will make the decision on the 24th of January.
No, I know, a second vote.
No, um, yes, I would imagine that it would be the School Committee to say, yeah, we'll have a second vote. A second vote.
By an up or down vote of the committee, whatever.
Well, it would probably be because of a down vote of voting in town.
Yeah, but then they would vote up or down to proceed with a second vote.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I'm, it seems to be the logical way to go about it. I have to ask that specifically, but it would seem that they're the ones that decide when the vote's gonna take place. They're the ones that decide if a vote takes place, so yes.
Your committee probably doesn't have any authority to call votes, or?
No.
Recommendation votes.
We recommend, we recommend, yes, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions about that timeline, at all?
Just, Ken, I mean, yeah, yeah, a question for Ken.
Yeah.
Ken, if this passes on, say, April 6th, and requires a request by the town meeting, I mean, the town meeting, the electorate, on the 2nd, Tuesday, Monday, in May, would you propose a debt exclusion vote on the 2nd, Monday, in May?
Well, that's a good thought, you know, through the board, when we start to put together the warrant.
Do you have the time?
Yeah.
Is the timeframe there?
Well, I think so, I think we can put the, we can put the ballot question on if the thing isn't voted positively, you know, I guess the debt, the debt exclusion might not apply. Might encourage the School District to hold another vote, Dalton passes the debt exclusion.
Okay, I'm lost already. So, even if, before the vote is even taken, we could set up the warrant for a debt exclusion, because we will know.
We'll have to, you know, to be part of the warrant. Debt exclusion vote will be part of the warrant, which we typically finish up towards the mid, end of March.
Yeah.
Get it printed and all. And then, we have to submit the ballot, and that goes in the beginning of April.
So, it could be on the ballot, and say if it's not even needed, we just don't count it?
But, okay, it brings you to another question. If we put this, and the ballot starts talking about it in March, well before anything is decided, wouldn't that be unethical disclosure on our part, or pressure? I mean, we're not supposed to be involved in ballot questions.
We're not supposed to.
By putting it on there is presuming that it's going to pass.
Um, I don't know. Well, they're gonna, they are going to make a decision in January, trying to decide whether they're gonna, at what time they'll hold the vote.
Oh, it'll definitely be one of those two days. They're only a week apart. I mean, it's just a matter.
31st or the 6th, yeah.
It's the 30th or the 6th, and that, that's more or less, you can, you can count on that for a vote. As long as it's approved by the School Committee, it's approved by the MSBA, which I don't see where it isn't. I would assume that it will be. So, I think that this, this timeline will go as, as it's, as it's set up.
You could write the question, too, to say if it, if it is approved, correct?
No, you, debt exclusion questions have to, there's a script in the law, and you just have to copy it, that's how it goes. Do you approve, you know, the bonds or notes to be issued for the construction of?
Do you have to have the exact?
Exact wording.
I mean, the, the actual cost?
Um, no, in fact, the actual costs are bonds and notes.
So, you don't have to put in a cost like $27 million?
No.
It might go better if you don't put down $27 million.
What typically, what typically, what typically happens is, the usual course of events.
Yeah.
The, whatever is being borrowed is approved at a town meeting, has to be approved by a two-thirds vote, and many times, it's subject to a debt exclusion.
Yeah.
So, you get that part of it. And the other part is the debt exclusion, and no money appears. Are we gonna be able to present from the town what impact it would have on town services, or if this vote goes through? You can have, you can have a warrant article, and you can present it at a town meeting, even if the town, you could take a vote, it's not gonna, you could take a vote at a town meeting. It would probably, it'd be only advisory, but you can do, you can have a report, you can have a report with a vote, whatever this board's pleasure is. I mean, if we know that we gotta borrow this much money, what's it gonna do to the town?
We should.
You can have a non-binding ballot question with all the information on it.
We should know all that by the 24th of January. We should have that information.
Ken, how would you structure that? You say if we wanted to inject our opinion on the board, on the bond and indebtedness ballot question at the annual election, we could place an article on there explaining the consequences?
I think you could have a non, I think you could have a non-binding ballot question.
A ballot question, at an article at a town meeting?
You could have an article at a town meeting. I don't, you know, with the understanding that select board can't take an active, can't actively promote a ballot question, or?
No.
You can, you can do pretty much what you want.
We can draft any ballot question we want, we just can't promote it.
You can't promote it.
No, this was getting at before.
I mean, it's just a fact sheet, this, if this happens, this is what's gonna happen to the town.
Right.
Or what could happen.
Well, we'd have to discuss that anyways, because we have to set the tax rate at some point in time.
You could call for a, you could call for a ballot vote prior to the School District vote, in order to get another sense of the town. Wouldn't bind the School District, but they would get a sense of, they'd have, they'd hold the vote anyway. But you have to have a special election.
Prior to their district vote, but we.
Oh, never mind, go ahead.
It's just not binding.
Right, but you, but you suggested this is alternative before the election?
You could, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, just throwing it out, while it's over here, yeah.
The normal way, I mean, the more, normal way to do it would be to put it on the annual town election as a ballot question.
Yeah, but that's binding.
I don't think, and I don't know, we have to talk to council about it, but I don't think putting the debt exclusion question on the annual town election would have the same, would be promoting that particular question. It's just that we're being, we're trying to be prepared, and we have to meet certain timelines. But, you know, we, you know, we always.
Instead of holding, we have to hold a whole.
We have to hold a special election.
A special election, if we don't do it at the annual town election.
Right.
Which is just a lot of work, really. Any other comments about the schedule? Okay.
Classic.
A couple, a couple more things, and I, I went over this with Ken, the type of, what they call the type of construction delivery that's gonna be used, or is recommended, is the, called a CM at risk, the construction, construction management at risk. You know that better than I. You explained it to me, could you explain it to the board again?
I hope I can, because it's, construction manager at risk really puts the risk of cost overruns in the hand of the construction manager. So, they, he's got an upset limit he has to live within, and he has to deliver the product for that price.
Mm-hmm.
And he can't come back and ask for a change order.
Yeah, that's, they, they also said that there would be more contractors bidding using that process, as well as, as saving time. They estimate that it could save as much as six months on the, on the project, in construction. And I don't know why, I don't have a reason to give you that says why that will happen, so.
And I don't know why, because I'm not familiar, you know, I know it exists in the law, I've never used it myself, so I can't comment.
The construction of this new building will be, will be done at a level, the, the energy efficiency level of the LEED, L-E-E-D silver level, and that cost has already been assumed in the estimates that they are giving us. And that, in and of itself, will increase the reimbursement that the district gets from, originally it's 54%, would be another 2%, which would bring it up to 56%. There was also talk about making the, the building a net zero, a net zero building, which means, correct me if I'm wrong, okay, which means that you gather your renewable energy on-site, whether it's through geothermal energy, solar, whatever else it may be. The way they describe the geothermal area, it's about a 50,000-square-foot area, it's underground, 125 wells, 400 to 500 feet deep. And don't shoot the messenger, because I have no idea about this stuff.
Put me in water.
If it does, yeah. And then, that, that would be great, but they also need about 100,000 square feet of solar arrays on that property, which means not only the building, but the only way they could do it is probably put it on the parking lots, and make the parking lots like a carport-type parking lot. These are things that were discussed. And they estimate an additional cost if that were done, if that were done, of about $7 to $8 million. So, and the payoff for something like that, roughly speaking, on the energy that you would save over the years, it would take somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 or so years to recoup that money, which is about the same amount as the bond that will be made. They're figuring 25 or 30 years. And then, Unibank is the bonding, the financing agency that the, the district is going to be using, and, and it all depends on what type of bonds you take. You either see the short term, which may be short term in the beginning, because it's kind of a pay-as-you-go for the first few years, but then all of a sudden, that payment's gotta be made, the balloon payment, so then you get into your long-term bonding. And depending on what you do, depends on the rate, and there's really no idea. Unibank was saying that they're, they're figuring out about four to five interest rate increases over the next couple of years, something like that?
Yeah.
So, right now, and right now, their, their bond rate, and I'm not sure if it's short-term or not, was 1.75, which Ken was saying is a really good rate, but.
Must be very short.
It's a problem, it probably, yeah, short-term bond anticipation, that's most likely.
Yeah, yeah.
Ken, at one time, did you say that the back term of a bond issue for municipality like Dalton is 25 years?
I think it's 20.
20?
If I can look, yeah.
Well, is it different for a district?
But for certain, well, for certain, it depends on what you're borrowing for.
Hmm. Okay, so, that's what happened at the last meeting, and the next meeting is sometime in November, I'm not sure, beginning of November is the next meeting. So, it's moving along, and I'll keep you updated as things take place. Unless you have any other questions that I might be able to answer at this point, but.
Just one comment about the peaked roofs and stuff. This is the same outfit that built Teconic?
Yes.
They already had two peaks of Teconic, that so-called flat roof.
I'm glad you mentioned that. They are arranging tours of the Teconic School for any interested parties, like select boards, or Building Committee members, or anybody who wants to. So, if you're interested in going on a tour of Teconic, let me know. I'll just let the, the Building Committee Chair know, and they'll set up times when we can go have a tour, if you want, okay? Give me an email or whatever, unless you know now that you'd wanna go on a tour. Okay. Okay, Ken, town manager updates.
Okay, I'll try to keep this real brief. First thing I want to tell you is that we've reached the end of the road with the transfer of OPEB funds. We got a notification from the state that our application to move our OPEB trust from the certificate of, the certificates of deposit that we now have in, has been accepted by the state. There's a mandatory 60-day waiting period based on a notification that we had to give to the town clerk, so that money will be transferred in mid-December, and will go from earning just under 2% interest to earning about 9.5% interest. So, it was a very good suggestion our chairman made a year or so ago, took us a whole year to get to the process. I want to particularly thank the people who served on my little advisory committee, there's a lot of work behind the scenes, and I want to mention them specifically, of course, John Bartows and Sheriff Messenger, retirees, two accountants, Rick Lombardi and Suvejat, retired banker Mike Hoffman, former Finance Committee Chair Terry Williams, and our Treasurer Don Fahey. They did a lot of work over the winter interviewing firms and doing analysis. I wanted to thank, too, our Retirement Board, came in and spoke to us about how they invest funds, and so that was very successful, and I'm happy, and I think the town will benefit for years to come. It's gonna lower our liability in the out-years because of the rates they earn, where instead of being, having $1.7 million in savings accounts, we're part of a $70 billion trust fund that the state holds for all retirees across the state, all state employees, and those communities that choose to put their OPEB funds in the state retirement re-trust, so.
The return rate was really good, too.
Yeah.
If I remember, better than most, if not all.
It's had a long-run rate of return, over the last 10 years, about 9.5%. They can, it's so massive, and they have such good advice, that they could be able to diversify.
Are the funds in there now?
Not till mid-December.
Okay.
Yeah, mid-December, the transfer will take place.
There's a grace period?
Yeah, we, we have to give, we had to give some kind of statutory notice to the town clerk, and it's 60 days from when we did that, and so that's mid-December, but that would've been accepted into the fund, so I'm very pleased about that. The MEMA grant that we've been working on for three years, we, we had another conference call today with BEMA and FEMA, other, we think, you know, we have to get some information into them by the end of this month, and we think we're gonna be able to make a reasonable attempt, data based on all the information we've gathered. We've had, believe it or not, I want to tell you this, this interesting data, based on the flood gauge down in Coatesville, that measures the cubic foot per second of flow, we can tell when there were floods. There were floods in 1927, 1936, 1938, 1948, 1980, 2005, and 2011. So, that's the data, we had to, we had to do some manipulation with it, with the data, and give them something called recurrent intervals of floods and all that kind, what size were the floods, and end up cranking into some cost-benefit software, it was fun to play with, but it was a lot of work, we're almost done. But the good news is, if we are successful, we'll get a sizable grant to improve the drainage at the old All-Nite. That's really what it's all about, that's why it's worth working on. And the 1980 study that was done by the Soil Conservation Service, U.S. Soil Conservation Service, pointed out two ways, really three ways, we could have taken care of a 100-year flood, so-called. And that's to put in a, replace the 42-inch pipe that we've, that Walker Brook has channeled into the 60-inch pipe, a 5-foot pipe, or run a pipe alongside the existing pipe of about four feet, 48 inches, or leave the pipe in place, and then we have a stream above ground again. So, we've eliminated that because the permitting is, is just not feasible. In order to get the job done, we think the least cost alternative right now is to put another pipe in place alongside the existing pipe. The engineers, Phil Engineer helped us before, they're helping us again, they're costing that out, so, and I'm reasonably optimistic, but we'll see.
Ken, would it be all the way down to Main Street, or get down to our property?
No, it'd be all the way down to Main Street. It's about 2,000 feet or something like that. Goes from Walker Brook all the way down, and empties out, right by the post office, Rivers, yeah. Ken, the study that Tyne &amp; Monde did, that we, we used for the committee, do they have a copy of that report also? Yeah, they do. Okay. Yes, they have it. What's the cost? Well, the last time we estimated, putting in a 5-foot culvert, Tyler replacing it, it was $800,000 total cost.
So, we're looking at that ballpark?
That's the ballpark. We don't want to exceed that, because then the cost-benefit analysis doesn't work. There's, there's an interesting, I don't mean to get in too much into the weeds on it, it's kind of fascinating, because to this cost-benefit software, they added some new modules. One is for lost labor productivity, and the other is for mental distress. So, I was able to add that, simply based on the senior center, because if you wipe out the senior center. the senior center, some people are going to lose their jobs and 265 citizens, residents of Dalton, won't be able to partake of those services. So that really increases the benefits of doing this kind of a project.
Hmm, interesting.
So the other thing I wanted to report on is the town hall insulation project that was awarded to Berry Architects for a total cost of $17,000. The first phase, $13,500 is really going to take the original, um, energy audit that we did and turn that into plan, bid plans and specifications. The second piece won't be done unless there's funding to actually build it. But they started today, they're on-site going through, going through the town hall and I'm excited that that, that project is moving forward. And lastly, on the LED light project, we got back a signed purchase and sale agreement from, from Eversource. We filed additional purchase orders with, from called Graybar, which is the vendor of the, the lighting. And we're taking care of some little details there, but it still looks like we're on track for a go about the end of November to start installing the lights.
Good.
And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Walter?
Ken, I noticed, I was at the senior center, I said the afternoon, and I noticed that the construction company, I forgot their name already, is on-site. They put up a fence.
Yeah.
All kinds of other barriers, all kinds of equipment on-site. So it looks like they're.
They got the windows sealed.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the asbestos removal.
They're ready to go here, or if they haven't started already today.
They must work a four-day week.
I.
They're from Utica, correct?
They're from Utica, yeah.
Probably working four, 10-hour days.
Yeah, because I noticed all of a sudden they were, they were gone mid-afternoon on Thursday.
Yeah.
And they cleaned up and, you know, they keep the place pretty neat even when they're out there and, uh, I don't think they came back on Friday, so. But it doesn't matter. I mean, you know, they got a two or three-hour commute too.
It's a long way.
Yeah.
It'll sail up.
It'll be good, it'll be good. Thank you. All right, items for future agendas. I'm going to take off the junk car item, virtual gas and the Halloween one because we're going to be announcing that in our announcements. So are there any additions? Anything that anybody has? Okay, we'll keep it as is then. Thank you. I'll try not to lose this one. I'll give the other one. Remarks of the select board.
Ken, is it possible to give us a list of what we owe for debt and when we're going to pay it off?
Yes.
It'd be helpful.
Do you want it on a, an agenda item?
Why don't we do that, Ken, at first?
Yeah.
How do you, okay, you want a?
Updated debt list?
How do you want to word it?
Schedule, schedule of indebtedness.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to see what we got and when it's going to be paid off.
Uh, you suggest long-term or short-term or both?
Both, yeah. Anything we owe.
Okay.
And one other thing for Ken, uh, the energy credits, it's almost the end of October for the pow-pow, is there any reason that they, they've given us that we're not getting these credits yet that they promised us in October?
When we schedule that for, put it on the items for future agendas, if they're lined out, I do owe you a report on it.
Okay, how do you want me to, how do you want it on here?
Oh, net metering update.
Okay. I can put both of those things on for next meeting?
Um, yes, I think we can get them both done. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments? Okay. Which brings us to our announcements. The state election on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018 will be held at the Dalton Community House, 400 Main Street, Dalton, Mass. A link to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts website, which allows voters to check their voter registration status can be found at www.dalton-mass.gov. Click on the Town Department's Town Hall Town Clerk Elections and click the link to voter registration. Note also that early voting will be available from today, Monday, October 22nd through Thursday, October 25th, 2018, and Monday, October 29th through Thursday, November 1st, 2018, from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. in the office of the Town Clerk, Town Hall, 462 Main Street, Dalton, Mass. For further information, please call 684-413-684-6111, extension 14 or 15. Trick or treat will be held on Halloween, Wednesday, October 31st, 2018, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Dalton Police Department is reminding the citizens of Dalton of a winter parking ban which goes into effect on November 15th, 2018 and will be in effect until April 15th, 2019. Winter is here. The Fitch Hoose House is now open through October on Saturdays from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I hold office hours by appointment. For further information, call 413-684-6111, extension 11, or my home phone number, 413-684-2526. And if you can't make it here, I can come to you if need be. The Dalton Beautification Commission is seeking volunteers to assist in maintaining the commission's established garden spaces in the community. If interested, please contact the town manager's office at 413-684-6111, extension 11. State Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall, 462 Main Street, in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with the exception of the third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Town Hall and from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I move we go into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel and not return to open session.
I'll second that. Motion's been made, second to go into executive session. We'll call vote, Mr. Boyle.
Yes.
Mr. Hollow.
Yes.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes.
Mr. Stroud.
Yes.
Mr. Bartels, yes. We will be in recess for a few minutes.